Parish Police Jury for Thursday, December fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Give me one moment, little computer problem here. We'll have the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Mr. Barris. Is that correct?
Mr. Brain.
Mr. Brain, okay. Y'all would please stand.
Let's pray. Father God, we just give you praise and glory for who you are. We thank you for this day. Just thank you for your many blessings and chalae upon each and every one of our lives today, Father. I just ask that you give us wisdom and discernment as we make the decisions tonight that please you, Father. And we just recognize that this time of year is a special time of year for both of your son, Jesus, and we just ask that we just can focus on that for the next several weeks coming up and just give you praise for your son. We ask these things in your son's name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Page slide, repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, roll call, Madam Secretary.
Yes, sir. Mr. Angepont is at an executive board meeting of the Louisiana Police Jury Association this evening. Mr. Barris.
Here.
Mr. Brain.
Here.
Mr. Collins.
Here.
Mr. Farnum.
Here.
Mr. Gidry.
Here.
Mr. Gillery is also at the same meeting as Mr. Angepont. Mr. Hunter.
Here.
Mr. Latour.
Here.
Ms. Mayo.
Here.
Vice President McMillan.
Here.
Mr. Scott.
Here.
Mrs. Trimmie is also at the meeting. Mr. White.
Here.
And President Landry.
Here.
You do have a call.
Thank you, Ms. Kathy. Before we get started, I would ask that everyone please silence their phones. If you wish to speak on any item on tonight's agenda, we ask that you fill out a blue slip that you'll find at the front of the room there, and you can hand it to someone at the staff desk. Item four, recognition of parish staff for successfully completing the police jury's twenty fifteen, two thousand and sixteen Eagle Academy program. Mr. Bean.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I'll ask Nina Trahan from Human Resources come up, and she'll give a few comments, and then we have some certificates.
All right, great. Ms. Trahan, if you would, just state your name and your position with the parish, please.
Amina Trahan, Human Resources Department, Training and Development Specialist.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to acknowledge our Eagle Academy graduates tonight. I'd also like to offer a very special thank you to our administration for the support of this important parish initiative and to our nominators who have recognized the leadership potential in each one of these nominated leaders. These fifteen parish leaders covered many facets of leadership, including private sector leadership topics like customer service training, team building and public speaking, and topics that are more geared towards government, like ethics and transparency and using taxpayer dollars wisely. These all-day trainings are held every other month over a two-year, in this case, it was a three-year period. This group also was the first group of participants to partner up in our Eagle Ally Program. This component of the Eagle Academy paired our participants up, creating training days for them far beyond our regular meeting days so that they could try other ideas and other training avenues within the parish. Some of those training days were things like visiting their ally's department, in many cases, participating in activities that they would never have had an opportunity to participate in in any other work situation. For example, we've had a bridge engineer fight fires at our Certsey Calcasieu Emergency Response Training Center. We had an IT infrastructure administrator spend time in the great outdoors handling emergencies with our park superintendent. We've had an engineering project manager participate in surgeries with our veterinarian. So obviously, these are lots of great ways for people to enjoy perspectives that we don't normally get to enjoy in the silos of our individual job duties. So a great component of the program. I would like to acknowledge each of the recipients or graduates, if you would indulge me, who are here tonight. And I have seen some of them. Brian, I think is going to help out. So in the program, completing this year in two thousand and sixteen, Danny Barty. I'm not sure if Danny made it. They can come right up front. Joshua Campbell. Julie Fay.
Congratulations, guys.
Congratulations. Good job.
Jennifer Hawes.
Congrats.
Good job.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Good job.
Good job.
Good job.
Ken and Leonard.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Yeah. Congratulations.
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 Thanks for participating.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Todd Parker.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Lindsey Powers.
Wvette Pryor-Cusin.
Ali Simon.
Good luck to you.
Congratulations.
Terry Talbot.
And Tammy Ton.
Again, congratulations and continued success to all of our graduates. We appreciate your dedication to the parish.
Do you want to say what?
Well, let Chris get in. Chris.
Yeah, Chris.
Chris.
One, two, three.
One more?
Where is it?
Where's that?
One, two, three.
Good job.
Congratulations.
That go kill it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a great.
Yes, we're great.
That's all.
I'm good.
No.
Let me see if Jess Mason.
So tell me where the tax base is.
Good program.
Whenever it comes up, when is that?
I thought they just renewed one.
Yeah, but not the one.
Okay, item five, take appropriate action on applications for liquor and beer permits. Mr. Crane.
Mr. President, we have four applications for you. We recommend that be approved.
Move to approve. Second. Got a motion by Mr. Farnum, second by Mr. Barris. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item six, consideration of approving payment of all current invoices. Had a motion by Mr. Scott and a second by... Mr. Barris. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item seven, consideration of approving the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated November seventeenth, two thousand and sixteen. Got a motion by Mr. White and a second by Mr. Farnum. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item eight, consideration of approving and adopting the fiscal year two thousand and seventeen annual budget in accordance with the Local Government Budget Act as follows. A, approve the proposed parish budget for fiscal year two thousand and seventeen in accordance with the public hearing held on Thursday, December first, two thousand and sixteen, and the recommendation of the Budget Committee. B, authorize the parish administrator, the parish treasurer, and/or respective departmental directors to make changes within various budget classifications. Approve herein without further approval. C, amend the fiscal year two thousand and sixteen budget for those funds which deviate from estimated budgeted revenues and/or expenditures. I had a motion by Mr. Latour and a second by Ms. Mayo on all bullets. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Ms. Brain.
I would just like to state out that, you know, being chairman of the Budget Committee this year, I just want to thank the staff and all the, everybody, Tammy, everybody that had a, of course, everybody had a role in the budget, but I just want to thank y'all for y'all's hard work. Thank you. Turned out great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
You, Mr. Brain. Is there any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item nine, take appropriate action on a request by Wesdale Properties of Sulphur LLC to amend ordinance number four eight eight two to remove stipulation number two that the use is for a daycare facility only at one eighty-eight East Telephone Road in Ward One. Moved to uphold plan and... Planning and zoning board met on Tuesday, December thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen, and voted unanimously to recommend that the request be granted. Mr. Crane?
Just briefly, I think there needs to be some clarification on the zoning case number. This case was deferred several times, and then it was withdrawn, and then they actually came back and we placed it back on the agenda after actually working through all the issues and everything, and we did resolve that. But this case is the same case that was withdrawn and then, or deferred and then withdrawn, and now it's back on. So anyway, just wanted to clarify.
Okay. All right, we had a motion by Mr. Collins and a second by Mr. White. Mr. Farnum.
Thank you, Mr. President. I noticed that in the, on the zoning board the other night, they removed stipulation, I think it was number two.
Yep.
That changed the parking requirements. What made that okay? I'm just curious.
Well, and the applicant could come up, but that's what we were working out. We were working out their parking. They didn't have enough onsite parking, and they're actually going to share parking to the neighbor next to them, and they've gotten their private agreements in place, and so they're going to be able to handle their parking with that, so.
I guess that, that being said, it's good for now. What happens if these handshake agreements between them and their neighbors go away?
Well, what we did, yeah, we put a stipulation in there that if this private agreement goes away, then the event center has to be removed.
Good, good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farnum. All right, is there any further questions or discussion? Is there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item ten, take appropriate action on a request by Darren R. Snyder.
Move on ten with stipulations.
LLC to rezone from central business commercial to light industrial to allow light industrial development to contractor shop and storage yard at twenty-four ninety-one Sam Houston-Jones Parkway in Ward One. Planning and zoning board met on Tuesday, December thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen, and voted unanimously to recommend that the request be granted. Mr. Crane?
Just briefly, I think there needs to be some clarification on the zoning case number. This case was deferred several times, and then it was withdrawn, and then they actually came back and we placed it back on the agenda after actually working through all the issues and everything, and we did resolve that. But this case is the same case that was withdrawn and then, or deferred and then withdrawn, and now it's back on. So anyway, just wanted to clarify.
Okay. All right, we had a motion by Mr. Collins and a second by Mr. White. Mr. Farnum.
Thank you, Mr. President. I noticed that in the, on the zoning board the other night, they removed stipulation, I think it was number two.
Yep.
That changed the parking requirements. What made that okay? I'm just curious.
Well, and the applicant could come up, but that's what we were working out. We were working out their parking. They didn't have enough on-site parking, and they're actually going to share parking to the neighbor next to them, and they've gotten their private agreements in place, and so they're going to be able to handle their parking with that, so.
I guess that, that being said, it's good for now. What happens if these handshake agreements between them and their neighbors go away?
Well, what we did, yeah, we put a stipulation in there that if this private agreement goes away, then the event center has to be removed.
Good, good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farnum. All right, is there any further questions or discussion? Is there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item ten, take appropriate action on a request by Darren R. Snyder.
Move on ten with stipulations.
LLC to rezone from central business commercial to light industrial to allow light industrial development to contractor shop and storage yard at twenty-four ninety-one Sam Houston-Jones Parkway in Ward One. Planning and zoning board met on Tuesday, December thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen, and voted unanimously to recommend that the request be granted with stipulations. Let's see, had a motion by Mr. White and a second by Mr. Scott to uphold. Is that correct, Mr. White?
Yes.
Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item eleven, take, no action necessary. The applicant has withdrawn the request. Item twelve, the case has been also withdrawn by the applicant as well. Item thirteen, consideration of adopting a resolution approving a contract between the police jury and Progressive Waste Solutions of Louisiana Incorporated, DBA Waste Connections of Louisiana, okay, for solid waste collection and disposal for Ward One of Calcasieu.
Move on thirteen.
Got a motion by Mr. White and a second by Mr. Hunter. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item fourteen, consideration of adopting a resolution approving a software as a service agreement between the police jury and Kronos, Inc., for maintenance, hosting, and support services of the parish workforce timekeeping software. Motion by Mr. McMillan, second by Mr. Collins. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item fifteen, consideration of adopting resolutions for the following procurement contractual or other related activities for the calendar year two thousand and seventeen. A, authorize the parish purchasing agent to issue and sign purchase orders in conjunction with any proposed purchasing activity. B, authorize the parish purchasing agent to utilize procedures, state contract procedures for applicable purchases and standard bid items. C, declare various movable assets, heavy equipment, and vehicles as surplus property in authorizing the disposal of said items to be sold as appropriate. At a, oh wait, we still got more, another page. D, authorize the parish treasurer and/or parish purchasing agent to execute the designation of construction contractor as agent of a governmental entity's sales tax exemption certificate. E, authorize the parish administrator to execute any procurement-related contracts which are under one hundred thousand dollars and are not required to be formally procured. F, authorize the parish administrator or his designee to execute any contracts and/or cooperative endeavor agreements that are also under one hundred thousand dollars between the police jury and the various special service districts, nonprofit organizations, or other governmental entities on a project-specific basis. G, authorize the parish administrator or parish treasurer to execute all risk management and health clinic-related activities for two thousand and seventeen. H, authorize the parish administrator or his designee to execute any documents related to day-to-day operating activities conducted by the parish. I, authorize the parish administrator or his designee or the parish treasurer to act on behalf of the parish and to execute any documents related to the day-to-day grant activities. J, authorize the parish administrator, parish engineer, and public works director to execute any documents to provide consent related to use or activity conducted within parish road rights of way. K, authorize the parish administrator and the director of planning and development to execute procurement contracts related to private property. L, authorize the library director to execute any procurement-related contracts for the library system which are under one hundred thousand dollars and are not required to be formally procured. I had a motion by Mr. Farnum and a second by Mr. McMillan on all bullets. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item sixteen, consideration of adopting resolutions for the following items as requested by the Human Services Department. A, authorize the director of human services to execute programmatic agreements under the Community Services Block Grant. B, authorize the director of human services to execute program-specific agreements with homeowners relative to the housing assistant payment contracts. C, authorize the director of human services and/or the Workforce Development Board Director to execute programmatic agreements. D, approve the submittal of a funding application to the Federal Transit Administration Non-Urbanized Area Formula Program in rural transit, which will provide operating and capital assistance for the provision of transportation services to rural citizens. E, approve the submittal of a funding application to the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development for the two thousand and seventeen Transit Job Access and Reverse Commute Program. F, approve a joint services agreement between the police jury, the Calcasieu Parish Sheriff's Office, the Calcasieu Parish District Attorney's Office, the Ward Three Marshal's Office, and the City of Lake Charles for continuation of the Triad Program for two thousand and seventeen. Approve a cooperative endeavor agreement between the police jury and the Southwest Louisiana Area Health Education Center for nursing and clerical services at the Calcasieu Parish Health Unit. H, approve an agreement between the police jury and the Louisiana Housing Corporation for the low-income home energy assistance program, which is referred to as La Heep. I, authorize the parish purchasing agent to advertise for, request for proposals for one-stop operator services for the partners in the one-stop center. Had a motion by Mr. Farnum, a second by Mr. Collins. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item eighteen, consideration of adopting a resolution accepting the Burton Memorial Coliseum upgrades and improvements project as substantially complete. I have a motion by Mr. McMillan and a second by Mr. Latour. Is there any discussion? Mr. Brain? Oh, Mr. McMillan?
Is Jason here? Where's Jason?
I think so.
Mr. Barnes happened to be here? I did see him earlier, but he does not appear to be in the room.
Good.
Are you okay?
I was, maybe Dean could give us what upgrades we, we're...
I feel confident that he could. Here he is. He was nearby. Mr. Barnes, if you could. Mr. McMillan's going to put you on the spot, and I'm sure you'll be able to answer all the questions that he puts before you.
Basically, not on the spot, but anytime we do upgrades to such a great facility, I'd like the opportunity for you to brag a little bit about what new things we have at the Burton Coliseum.
There you go.
Well, I appreciate that. Thanks for asking. We just completed a pretty substantial project with the help of Dean and facilities capital improvement. We upgraded with a new sound system that was put in about a year ago. In fact, our first time we used it was graduation last year, which, so we've hit that year mark. And we did a substantial upgrade with our sprinkler systems, so the sprinkler system is now throughout the entire Coliseum. And finally, we put rigging into the roof to where we can now go out and try to get touring productions, concerts, things like that. It's essential in having for those kinds of productions. So that's what we're looking forward to in the next several years.
Yeah, a couple of things that we've been working on for a while. The walkway aisle, between the aisles, having the handrails going up. Is that, that project's complete as of now?
Yes, sir.
All the way to the top?
Yes, sir.
That's great. That was something that was going there. And the other thing was the acoustics in the Burton Coliseum sometime can be kind of tough. I know our new sound system, but do we have the padding? I know you'd gotten with the Cajun Dome and some of that to check out the acoustics. What are we doing to make the acoustics better in the...
Well, with the sound system, the acoustics, actually, the sound system helps the acoustics overall. There really was a problem with the acoustics of the sound, of not, the sound not reaching. With the new amplification that we've got and the new system that we have in place, it's able to reach every seat in the house, and it's been doing very well.
Major events coming up in Burton Coliseum, staying pretty full.
Well, we're about to get into our major event season where we're getting ready for the annual Southwest District rodeo, and then right after that will be the boys' basketball tournament, and then the Highway Rabbit Festival, and it just keeps on going all the way through high school graduations in May, and the state rodeo finals in June.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Any other questions for Jason? Good. Thank you, Jason. Okay, is there any further discussion or any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item nineteen, take appropriate action on bids received by the parish purchasing agent for sewer services. Actually, the staff recommends that all bids be rejected due to budgetary constraints, and requests for quotes will be obtained.
Yes, sir.
So I guess no action necessary? Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Wainwright or Mr. Crane, what kind of sewer services were these?
Generally, these are services where these are added resources for our sewer department. We've got a pretty small staff, and sometimes occasions come up that we need a little extra staff and resources. So we need to be able to call Roto-Rooter and Cajun, companies that do that kind of work. So we're trying to get our bids in place to do that, and we're going to make some, having to change gears a bit here, but we'll go at it another way.
Is this for services on parish buildings or...
Could be a parish facility, but generally, it's in our sewer systems, like at Mallsville, you know, at Mallard.
Right.
In those areas, the little sewer districts, the community sewer systems that we run around the parish. So they have some resources that helps us just keep our, keep our department small, really, by contracting some of that out sometime.
As you said, we rejected them due to budgetary constraints. Can you just expand on that a little bit?
This was a bid where it was an annual-type bid process, and so the, didn't work out on the numbers in terms of what we thought we would be able to afford, so we're going to, when you see requests for quotes, we're going to kind of go at it at a case, by case basis and adjust our sales a little bit so that we can afford the amount of services we need when we need it. So that's sort of what's happening there. It's kind of a changing gear so we can get the service when we need it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Mr. Scott?
So it was advertised, and they were the only two to actually respond?
Yeah, that's generally the two that participate in our service, and we want to be able to use them both.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Scott, is there any further discussion? I think we had a, we did have a motion and a second, didn't we? Oh, we didn't need any. Okay. Any further discussion? Move on. Item twenty, consideration of authorizing the parish purchasing agent to advertise for, request for proposals for lawn and ground maintenance for parish facilities and parks. Have a motion by Mr. Brain and a second by Mr. Farnum. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, go ahead.
If we can go back to nineteen, I guess the more proper way to do that would be to accept staff's recommendation and to reject bids. I guess we should take a motion on it.
Move on. Second.
We'll do it. We now have one by Mr. Hunter and a second by Mr. Scott. Any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Back to item twenty. Did we do twenty, Mr. McMillan?
Yes, we did.
I think we did. We go on twenty-one. Consideration of authorizing a parish purchasing agent to advertise for bids or purchase utilizing state contract purchasing procedures for one small skid steer for use by animal services and adoption center. Had a motion by Ms. Mayo and a second by Mr. Collins. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item twenty-two, consideration of adopting a resolution of condolences to be forwarded to the family of the late Edward Martin, Sr. Have a motion by Mr. Hunter and a second by Mr. McMillan. Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, Mr. President. If any of y'all ever knew Ed Martin, he was a real character. Martin GMC, he's the founder of that company, and he was a good friend, he was a good family man. He was a man full of jokes, some not funny, and I think he knew that. They were always entertaining jokes, though, and he always put a smile on your face. He battled some health issues these past few years, but every time I saw him, he always put everyone in a positive mood. He's a veteran, a Korean War veteran. He was a pilot, and I've got to be honest, he always wanted me to go and fly with him in one of his old antique planes, and I never had the courage to do it, and I feel bad now. I really feel bad now that I never took him up on that. But a great man, a great family, a good friend. His whole family's been good to this area, and we really lost a true patriarch of the business community in Lake Charles with his passing. So thank you all for these condolences and prayers and thoughts to his entire family. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Mr. McMillan?
Yeah, I'd kind of reiterate some of the things Nick said. A definite family man. Of course, the business he established, his family's still in today. And another thing, too, the USS Orlick champion for that cause. That's where I really got to know him well, and I know that he's, it's dear, near and dear to his heart. He loved the Orlick, and a great man, fun to be around, and a wealth of knowledge. He will be missed in Calcasieu Parish. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Is there any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item twenty-three, consideration of adopting a resolution of condolences to be forwarded to the family of the late Dr. David Kessel. Uh, Mr., uh, motion by Mr. Brain and a second by Mr. Hunter. Mr. Brain?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, man, I could talk all, a long time about David Kessel. He was just a good, good friend, a good, good customer. Uh, I guess one of the things I, I remember about David is he always came by my shop and, and, uh, you know, had coffee, but I just loved always hearing about his, his duck hunting stories and I don't know if Hal got into some, some of those, but, uh, and he was real instrumental in, in establishing the Delta Waterfowl, um, Gulf Coast Chapter. He was really involved in that. He was just a, he was just an all-around good guy. He was a dentist here in town. I know probably many, many of y'all know him. Uh, but he's just a good guy. Just as that y'all lift Donna up in, in the family. Uh, it was kind of a, a sudden, a sudden loss, but, uh, David, David's gonna be missed by, by a lot of people. He just had a, he had that uplifting personality, um, and just, you know, just a pleasurable, pleasurable guy. So, I just, uh, thank y'all for supporting this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Brain. Uh, Mr. McMillan?
Hey, one of his things, his heritage to be here, not only a great dentist, a great family man, but, uh, Delta Waterfowl. The Delta Waterfowl start, he started Delta Waterfowl in southwest Louisiana. Of course, you got a couple of major duck organizations, DU being one and Delta Waterfowl being another, but they have one major banquet here in southwest Louisiana and they're the number one banquet in the United States. He brought it to number one through his, uh, tenure of being in Delta Waterfowl. A great avid outdoorsman and just a really fun guy to be around. He will be missed. Keep him in your prayers. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Anyone else? Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, Ms. President. I agree with everything that Mr. Brain, Mr. McMillan said about Dr. Kessel. He was a great man and also, I'm glad Mr. Brain mentioned Donna. He has a great family, Donna and his wife, uh, his wife Donna, his daughter Stephanie, good, good people, and I know this was a shock for them and I really hurt for them when I heard about this. And so, we lift them all up in our prayers, 'cause this was kinda sudden. I didn't expect this one. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Is there any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries.
Move to adjourn.
Uh, yeah, hang on. Only if it was that easy, Mr. McMillan, that'd be great, but it's not. Uh, first, we have Mr. Scott.
Uh, Mr. Connor, just for a few quick minutes, if we can discuss the Nelson Road Roundabout. Um, I know early on in our planning of this project, we discussed various ways that this project could take us six months or if we didn't close it down, it could take a year. Well, I think we're pushing that six-month mark and it, very little seems to be getting done. I'm getting murdered on the phone.
Second that.
So, I would just like to spend a few minutes, if you could just kinda start us, the dates this thing started, when we're looking to, and what's going on out there, just if you don't mind.
Sure, I'll be glad to, Mr. Scott. Uh, he started work in July and, uh, his completion date is January the 24th, which, uh, that's about a six-month period and, uh, he's not gonna meet that. Uh, whether he'll get some additional days because of wet weather, that's already built into the calendar day project, which this is. It's not a working day, it's a calendar day. So, he's gonna have to show that he's got some days in excess of what would be considered normal precipitation and, uh, so that's, that's his burden to, to show that.
Mr. Lane.
Uh, but come January 24th, when his contract time ends, he's gonna be assessed with stipulated damages at $480 a day. And so, hopefully, that would be enough incentive to make him realize he's gonna have to make up, catch up on some time. So, uh, he anticipates, stated to us that he would be flipping over to the other side in February, which by then, he's still gonna be in, uh, default and be charged some late fees, so.
Do you remember the cost of this project?
It's $2.6 million, the cost of the project. And, uh, Cliff Brewheart has been in conversation with the contractor and, uh, we're gonna be in, talking with him on a weekly basis, find out exactly where he's at and what he's doing to make sure he's, does everything he can to put forces that he needs to, to get this thing moving. So, um, he's, at the point right now, he's, he's got a little drainage work left on the east side and, uh, he's got to bring up another 12 to 18 inches of material and he's gotta sew it. And so, that's what he's working with right now and, uh, so, so he start pouring his concrete.
Well, I know during this process, you know, that 400% increase of traffic going through Crestview, you know, we've done everything we can to mitigate some of the problems for these people, but, you know, it just seems like this contractor, you know, I know he's out of town and, and maybe a little far from home, he knew this deadline was approaching, but I live right by this project and many, many a days, whether it was dry or not, two people working on a project of this magnitude. Today, there were two people out there again today. So, I know I've been on the phone, Mr., me and Mr. Cliff, we should just actually live together. I mean, we've been, we've been on the phone quite a bit and we've been continuing to try to move this thing along, so any help we can get in this, you know, if it takes whatever we need to do, but it's every day I drive up and I have to look at this project. It's not like I don't see it every day. So, you know, we just need a little bit, anything we can do on our end to kinda move it along. What's $480? I'm sure it adds up pretty quick starting in January, 'cause I don't seem making it, and it's gonna be a while.
No, I, I don't either. The only other additional time possibly added to this project will be when we do some enhancement and that'll be on the tail end of the project, uh, for the roundabout island. We're gonna be adding a few other things, but it's not gonna be enough.
The traffic will be flowing through it at that time.
That's correct.
That's what, this roundabout is supposed to improve traffic and right now, it's just killing it, so. Let's see what we can do about it and I appreciate your update on it. Thank you.
Well, I'll share in your frustration as well and we're gonna, we'll be on top of it.
Why, Mr. McMillan has, has a good suggestion is that why don't we just put this on the gen, agenda for next month and you could give us an update because we took a personal point of privilege and I think we've turned it into an agenda item, 'cause now there's what, two, y'all both wanna speak on it as well?
I just have a comment.
Go ahead, if we, let's keep it brief.
Well, I was just gonna, and Dennis actually touched on it when, uh, about the workers two out there today. I mean, I, I know we got a pretty good rain Monday, uh, Saturday, Sunday, a little bit Monday. Today's Thursday. But there hasn't been, I hadn't seen anybody there all week. Uh, now, um, and, and I just shared the frustration with Dennis and, and y'all too, but, uh, I've, I've getting beat up on the calls too, but because of the timeline and the amount of work that's getting done, so, like, there again, I appreciate, you know, I know Cliff's been on it and, and, and my main thing that I do is I go over there every morning and pick up cones because people run over them every night because they're getting, and, and, and also, I'm getting, uh, look, the restaurant there, La Bolla in, in Oak Crossing, they're, they're struggling because of the, the customers aren't being able to get, they, they get in, they're just avoiding it because of the construction. So, anything to help, they would help them. Uh, so, I, that was just a comment, but I appreciate you bringing it up, Dennis. And, and yes, please, if you could, maybe give us an update, uh, put it on the agenda and give us an update on it, it'd be great. Thank you.
And you, I mean, you may have the contractor, you may invite him to come if he wishes to.
Be glad to.
I'd rather he work.
I don't know if he'll make the invitation.
I mean, they could be, they could be working tonight.
Mr. President, thank you. That's exactly what I was gonna say. I, I would, if, if we have this as an, as, as an agenda item, we need to let this fellow know so he can come get some of this hot seat with you guys. Um, 'cause I hate the fact that you guys are catching all of this, um, due to someone's gross, uh, ineptitude. Um, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Barris. All right, is there any more personal points of privilege? Sure, go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. President. Regarding this, uh, roundabout, no. Uh, Mr., Mr. Beam, since, uh, Christmas fell on a Sunday this year, did our staff get any days off or they?
Monday, the 26th is a parish holiday.
Good, well, I'm glad to hear that. I just wanna say to all the staff, I'm glad y'all are getting a day off. I know Christmas fell on a Sunday, um, and we unfortunately sometimes, uh, in this world today, we can't always say what we wanna say, but I wanna say very loud and clearly Merry Christmas to everybody. Thank you.
You're right. Uh, thank you, Mr. Hunter. Mr. McMillan?
Is there any way Friday being before Christmas, it, maybe we could let them off a little early?
If you wanna debate it.[1734.12]